We will start off our meeting with a prayer by Commissioner Mitchell and a pledge by myself.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're very grateful that we can be here this evening. We're thankful that we can gather together for items that are on the agenda. We pray as we go throughout our meeting that everyone can share their ideas and concerns on each item and that we can all do so in a friendly manner. We're grateful for staff of our city. We're thankful for all those who have served in our community. Pray thou continue to bless them. Pray thou please help us all to continue to help Washington be a great place to live and to thrive as well. And we thank thee in this we pray and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one on our agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. If I can get a motion for that?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve tonight's agenda for November 5th. Planning Commission.
Second. I have first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two is the approval of the Planning Commission minute meetings from October 15th, 2025.
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we approve our minutes from our previous meeting.
I have first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number three is declaration of abstentions and conflicts. Does anyone have any? All right. Item 4A is a request for a conditional use permit for an existing commercial development located at 720 West Telegraph Street. The application is Ryan Morrison. And we'll turn the time over to Eldon.
Thank you, Commissioners. This exhibit on the screen shows the existing building on the top and then what they're proposing down below to give you a visual there. The applicant is requesting approval of conditional use permit to modify the exterior building material of the existing building located at 720 West Telegraph. The new exterior finishes are located on the front of the building and include updating the pitched roof line with a flat roof and adding lighter stucco to the entranceway, as shown. Staff has reviewed the proposed project and finds that it meets the requirement of the C-2 use regulations and as found in the zoning ordinance. Staff has no concerns with the proposal. Staff recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval onto City Council with the findings and condition as outlined below. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Eldon, it doesn't look like it's getting any taller, right? The peaks are the same? I mean, it didn't really call it out. I don't, it's still under the height.
Correct, yeah. They meet the height requirement. It'll be pretty close to the same height of that pitched roof.
This. You guys have any questions? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak to item 4A, please come up and do so. Okay, I will close the public meeting portion for item 4A. And if you guys have any other questions or concerns on this, if not, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion unless there's, anyone have any comments? Make a motion to recommend approval of C-25-12, request for a conditional use permit for an existing commercial development located at 720 West Telegraph Street, subject to the conditions and findings in the staff report.
Commissioner Anderson, a second. I have first by Commissioner Anderson, the second by Commissioner Tupou. Sorry. First by Commissioner Tupou, the second by Commissioner Anderson. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson. Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupou.
Aye.
I'm a Commissioner voter, I'm an aye as well. So we will, does this go back to City Council or is this just approved?
It says recommend.
Okay, so it'll go to Council on the next one. Awesome. Item 4B. C is a conditional use permit. C-25-09, a request for a conditional use permit for a childcare facility located at 562 East Day Springs Lane. The applicant is New Awakenings 2. And we'll turn this over to Eldon.
The childcare facility will run from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. The applicant is requesting the maximum number of children, which is 16, to be approved for this childcare facility. If the number of children exceeds eight, a second caregiver is required to be on premise at all times. The home will be required to be inspected by both the building and fire departments and given approval for the proposed use. A drop-off and pickup plan will need to remain in place to mitigate traffic congestion in the area. The childcare facility will be held in the basement of the home in the designated areas as shown in the exhibits. We can pull those up here. This is the floor plan of the basement. The backyard area will be used for outdoor recreation and is fenced with block material. Those highlighted areas in 15 are the backyard play areas. Staff did notice the home is a walkout basement and that the fence is not installed along both of the sides of the home where the front of the home transitions to the backyard area. Staff is concerned that children could get out of the backyard area with there being no fence installed in these side yard areas. Condition number eight was added to this staff report addressing this concern for fencing to be installed in both of these side yard areas. If the condition stated in staff report can be met, staff feels comfortable recommending the Planning Commission approve the proposed childcare facility based on the following findings and subject to the conditions stated in staff report. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. Can throw, slide through these photos here of the proposed childcare facility.
How many, how many, I guess I'm looking at the plans. One, oh, I guess there's two full bathrooms though. 16? Who, is there, for like a preschool type setting, is there any regulation, does someone oversee that? The Board of Education oversee that or not for private?
Commissioner, was your question whether there's a preschool regulation body? There is a state board that oversees and regulates, essentially licenses daycares and preschools at homes. And so Washington City doesn't have a regulatory body or authority that does that, but the state level does. And so most commonly, they come to the city for approval within the zoning that the city has adopted or within, you know, other code that the city may have. One of the requirements that staff administers is have they been licensed by the state as well?
And have they obtained a license already to do that? What are the credentials for someone who are teaching these kids?
The state often requires city approval before they'll issue that license. Kind of which one goes first? And it's the Utah Health and Human Services Department that oversees that child daycare facility.
Thank you. Does the applicant own the home?
I am not sure. That's a great question. The applicant could clear up for us.
Okay, just because it looks like a fire hazard on the side of the house.
Eldon, I'm assuming those are typos where it says the retaining wall is about 25 feet high? And the other one's 18? There's no way it's that high?
Yeah, I would assume those came from the applicant. Yeah, it could be inches maybe. No, it's there.
I mean, the first one looks like about 10 feet high and the other one looks like maybe. So the reason for putting the walls in, the concern is the kids will climb up the rocks, right? About, above the, above the rocks.
Repeat that with the mic on. I think the state, when they have to get their license with the state, the state is also going to weigh in on where that wall goes and how high it is and how it's constructed.
I assume being in HOA, they probably have regulations there as well. That fence has to be. Commissioner Tupou, you asked earlier about whether the regulatory look, looks at credentials of the, of the operators. I know that there's background checks and things that look at kind of history, but I don't know if they're looking at, you know, do they have a PhD versus, you know, some other, I don't know if there's any sort of credential that's required to do this as much as they're checking to make sure there's not any red flags that would, would cause concern with, with children.
Thank you. I think the question stems from, the only thing that I saw in the packet was a food handler's permit.
About as much credentials as the state requires. I might direct your attention to the staff report. Condition number five, it's in your packet. Eldon might be able to bring it up too for the gallery. That's the condition that, I'll just read it here because it's a sentence. Quote, "A copy of the approved State of Utah license for the childcare facility will be kept current and unfilled with the Community Development, Community Development Department and offices." And so the city essentially manages that like, like they would with, you know, business license or any other type of license. The city's got a role in helping them obtain that. Once they've obtained it, they've got to have it and display it at the, at the location of operation.
Thank you.
I pulled up the requirements that come from the Utah Health and Human Services. It's quite lengthy, the checklist there. I didn't dig in too deep, but I know they go through rigorous background checks. They come out, look at the facility requirements, the ratios and group size of the rooms, the bathrooms per ratio per student, supervision, security, you know, locking the doors, child safety, injury prevention such as fences, emergency preparedness items, you know, having a smoke alarms intact. So there's, there's a slew of items that the state requires to issue that license.
So I'm wondering, you guys have any other questions or concerns?
Maybe Chairman, can I take a moment for training with Commissioner Year?
Yes, please.
It's just a few minutes. Commissioner Year was recently appointed to the Planning Commission by the City Council. The way the City, the Planning Commission is organized is there are five seats and then a sixth, what we call an alternate. The reason for that is we, we try not to have a land use application be delayed because folks are out of town or something. And so the alternate exists as a, as a bona fide and authorized member of the, of the commission. The training tonight, Commissioner Year, is even though you were, you were appointed to the alternate position tonight, Merrill Davis is not present, and so you're, you're always able to participate in discussion and questions and all of the commentary. And the only difference on the alternate position is if there were five here, you would, would not vote, but most, most commonly, there's, seems to always be somebody out. And so tonight, you would both participate fully and also vote.
Training. Also, sorry I was late. I thought I was an hour early.
Yeah, the clocks have been funny lately and congratulations.
Excited to be here.
All right. We will open up item 4B for the public hearing portion of this. If you would like to come up and speak to this, please do. Please state your name into the mic and try to keep it as on point and best you can.
My name is Dulce Sanchez and I'm the person planning to have the, get the license for the childcare.
Are you the applicant? Okay, we will let you speak after all the public hearing. After everyone else.
I'm sorry.
That way, if there's anything we need to ask you questions on, we will do that afterwards.
Oh, okay.
So we will.
Sorry.
We'll ask, you're fine. Yeah, whoever. To the mic, please.
I introduce myself. My name is Paul Amazon.
Please speak into the mics so we can get this on the recording.
My name is Paul Amazon. I'm the president of the homeowners association in that vicinity. There's over 88 homes. My friend with me is my neighbor. He's also the vice president of the board. And I do have a document that I'd like for you folks to see. It's a brief copy of just a paragraph of the CCNR regulations. It clearly states that no commercial trade or business may be conducted in or from any, any lot unless, A, the existing or operation of the business activity is not apparent to detectable by sight, sound, smell, or from outside the lot. The business activities conforms to all zoning requirements for the project. The business activities does not involve persons coming onto the project who do not reside in the project or door-to-door solicitation of residents of the project. And the business activities are consistent with the residential character of the project and does not constitute a nuisance or a hazard or offensive use or any threat to the security and safety of others of the residence. Project, as may be determined, in the sole direction of the declarant and/or the association. So I'm here on behalf of the association, or it clearly states that we're not allowed to run businesses from our homes. Right now, she is running a daycare, which is a business. And second of all, she's approached our HOA two times. We have a company that we've hired, Community Association Management, that handles all those things. We do have an attorney onboard with them. They're a very large property management company, probably one of the biggest in the area. And she's applied twice and been denied twice. And here we are. Now, that's all I've got to say is because our CCNR strictly say, you know, if there's one business, then there's going to be two, then there's going to be three, then there's going to be four. We have a lot of contractors in our neighborhood, a lot of them. I know quite a few of them. And they do not conduct their businesses from their homes. They're not allowed to. So I don't, you know, my perspective is there's an issue I was very concerned about is if they're using the downstairs basement. There is a gate, there is block wall on three sides. There's a big, huge gate that you can drive a car into. Adjacent that is Tortoise Rock Road. You can see that on the map. Where that white car's parked. Tortoise Rock Road is a very, very busy, active avenue right now because they are building a 21,000 square foot on four and a half acre LDS church. There's a lot of semi trucks coming in and out. They're just about finished with that project, but they're not quite done. We have cement trucks coming in, we've got dumper, you've got excavating equipment, we've got a lot of stuff. And that road, Tortoise Rock Road, really has only got enough room for two cars to pass each other. So if you've got parked cars along the curbing there, it's going to be a safety issue. Because then somebody's going to have to drive into the dirt if there's a car parked there and then another one's coming this direction or one's going that direction. One's going to end up driving into the dirt. Because that's open property right now. It's, from what I understand, has been purchased from a company out of Las Vegas that wants to develop all that land. It's 35 acres. I didn't, I didn't, wasn't able to attend that zoning commission meeting.
I haven't, we haven't, I don't know if we've even heard of it.
Yeah. Well, there's going to be a hotel on, right off of Buena Vista in the corner of Washington Parkway and the 15th Southbound. In that corner there, that's part of that land. And then right across the street on Tortoise, on Buena Vista is 35 acres. And that is supposed to be, from what I've seen, I don't know if it's been approved or gone through you folks yet, but it's, I've, what I've seen was the hotel's phase one, phase two, commercial property, phase three, commercial property, phase four is going to be homes all along Tortoise Rock Road. So there's going to be a lot of activity on that street. Now, I don't know if they plan on having these children coming in and out of the front of their house, which I've talked to adjacent neighbors. They actually came to me when they heard about this and they've all said, we don't want that. We don't want a bunch of, you know, possibly endangering children. And we do have a lot of senior citizens in our track, probably 85% of them are retirees or approaching that age. And I've seen very, very, a lot of very close calls with children because on the corner inside our track, it's kind of a blind corner and kids used to play basketball right there. And I can see that from my garage. And I'm like, oh God, that kid's going to get hit. So people sometimes don't look around that corner. And then that street comes and then it makes a left or a right. It curves to the right. A lot of activity right there. I've seen where kids are riding their bikes or skateboarding or scooters or, and cars come around the corner and they don't have a lot of time to see what's going on in front of them. So that's my concerns.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Good evening. My name's Ralph Bobic. I live just down the street from there. I really don't have a problem, I guess, with the idea of a daycare, but I really have a problem with the traffic that Paul was talking about. If you look right here. This is Ruby here. People are going to come in, assuming that they're not going to open it. There's a gate here now and there's a big hump, but they drive trucks in and out here. I don't know if they're supposed to, but this is a little entrance. But I'm pretty sure that most of the people are going to be driving through here and coming here, even though they have this slow traffic. But this slow traffic is, did you say 16?
Can you, can you please, so we're trying to record this and they're going to be able to hear you.
Very good. I'm sorry. Did you say 16 children maximum? Is that what? It was hard to hear.
That would be the max.
Okay. So imagine being a neighbor and having cars backed up on that flow of traffic. I mean, why would you want to live in a neighborhood where you've got business with cars backed up when it's time for moms and dads to come home from school or from work to pick up their kids after daycare? It just seems like in a residential neighborhood, to have that kind of a flow is not something that people expect or anticipate or, or pay their money to buy a house for. And I will say that on the corner there, there's two little girls that live in that house and they're out on their bicycles and scooters and stuff. And if you have people come in and off Ruby and then taking a left and going across there, there's not much time for them to see what's going on. Just seems like it's an accident waiting to happen. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to item 4B? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of item 4B. Did you want to, did you want to speak, applicant? Please come in.
Okay. I know that 16 kids can sound like a.
Please state your name again for the.
My name is Dulce Sanchez. And I have more, over 25 years of experience doing this, the child, home childcare. And 16 kids with two providers is the minimum of the state required. I always have two more people working with me. And then, and the kids are always supervised. I never let the kids go up to the street or anywhere, you know? They always play inside in, in a yard. And it's always, you know, they are always supervised for us. So when, when we finish this process is when the state come and supervise everything about toys and, and if we have enough space and enough people there and we have, like you said, you know, all the background check for each person that is close to the kids. I need to have, we need to have all the trainings, like first aid CPR and food handler and, you know, taking training about child development and just all that they require. And I just go, you know, a few steps more. And we have the, the gate in the, in the side of the, that was the front yard for the, for the apartment. And then they told us that they prefer to, to have it pick up and drop off from, from the front to the main entrance. And if this is what the city thinks is, is better way to do, we're going to do it, we're going to follow the rules. For us and our, you know, experiences, we think that the gate is easier for the parents go there, but they don't want the cars just turning around, you know, for the safety of the kids. But my kids in the childcare, they will never play on the street or, you know, out of the area. So I would love to have my childcare back again. And, and I'm the person that I follow all the rules possible, you know, that they tell me, the city or the state. And I don't know if you have any question about it.
Are you the owner of the home or is it a rental?
Yes.
You are the owner?
Mm-hmm.
You guys have any other questions for Ms. Sanchez?
I do. Where did you run your daycare before?
In Salt Lake, West Jordan. West Jordan.
Okay. And when did you move here?
In 2019.
In 2019. The gentleman before you mentioned that you're running it right now out of the home. Is that true?
We have, I have five kids because the state lets you have six kids. We have, I have five kids because the state lets you have six kids without license. But because those kids were, I've been working with this process for a long time. But I stopped, I don't receive more kids until everything is, you know, until I have my license. Because most of the family, they have the state assistance and I require both licenses for that. So I just have those kids there because, you know, I just waiting for the process.
Okay. So you have the five children that you're running the daycare with right now.
Yes.
Prior to approval from the city?
I, I had the license before for this city. But then the pandemic came and then I closed everything. And then we bought another, a first house. But my husband built a carport on the side and we didn't qualify for the license. So we bought this house. And we were sure to have all the space we need for the childcare. And then started the process, but it was really, you know, slow because everything changed the way to, to apply. And then I just kept those kids because I thought that everything will go, you know, quick. But no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, during the discussion here, I did pull up the recorded documents of record for the lot identified here. And I have found that there are CCNRs that have been in place since 2014. And paragraph 21 of those, I'll just read it briefly. It's a few lines, but I think it might help the commissioners as you're considering it. It just says, paragraph 21, business use. No commercial trade or business may be conducted in or from any lot unless A, the existence or operation of the business activity is not apparent or detectable by sight, sound, or smell from outside the lot. B, the business activity conforms to all zoning requirements for the project. C, the business activity does not involve persons coming onto the project who do not reside in the project or door-to-door solicitation of residents of the project. And D, the business activity is consistent with the residential character of the project and does not constitute a nuisance or hazardous or offensive use or threaten the security or safety of other residents of the project. The Washington City does not have jurisdiction or authority to, to interpret the meaning of CCNRs or tell, or tell HOAs and associations what they mean. HOAs, in theory, can change their CCNRs at any given time, but it does appear from, from the opinion of the city attorney, that there is CCNRs in place that do restrict business use at this location.
Commissioner Mitchell, what effect does that have on the city? And because HOAs are outside of city restriction.
So I, I think in your deliberation tonight, I think that's a very relevant fact that you can consider when deciding whether the city should issue a permit to permit the use at this location.
Thank you. Yeah, close the public hearing. Thoughts?
We've had something similar to this, right? Where there was some CCNRs and they all do, right? But from our, we can't, can't really involved in that.
Everyone that we've ruled that if they have an issue with the HOA, they have to take it up with the HOA and that's between them and the HOA. I mean, CCNRs are deed restrictions. They're not, they're not city law or they're not state law or city code. It's a deed restriction between them and the HOA. But we've always looked at state requirements to meet the city requirements. And if they do have an issue with the HOA, we recommend they figure it out with the HOA. That's how we've always handled it. I think, I think the bigger issue here would be, I mean, the traffic, the traffic turns the same as every other one we've ever dealt with. I mean, every, every single daycare is in residential area. I mean, it's just what they are. It's just the nature of them. Like the gate at the bottom, which is mostly not a legal entrance. That wouldn't be very safe coming off of, off of that main road there.
Which I think is interesting, right? Because they're saying that they don't have a wall or a fence back there. So how do you have?
There's a, there's a wall there. It's got a gate there. There's no walls on the side of the property above the retaining wall.
That, that will have to go in.
That's my second thing that I, I think needs to be addressed is because I'm looking at it here, you know, on, on Google Maps and from the street view. Because it's a walkout lot and it's a corner lot, it's not as simple as just putting a, a wall across the top of the, of the retaining wall because you've got an adjoining property that comes in at a diagonal on both sides. And so you can still climb over, climb up on the, the boulders, you know, the, the rock retaining wall. You can climb into the neighbor's yard. You can climb. So I mean, you're going to have to have a block wall at the top of the retaining wall that's quotes as five feet, you know, to keep kids out of stuff. I mean, I would assume at least a five foot block wall at the top, but that, but that five foot block wall is going to have to wrap back a little bit to where it's still five feet when you're standing on one of those three tiers of the, of the rock wall. Because otherwise they can still climb up and over and neighbor's house. I mean, maybe a neighbor builds a pool and they don't have one right now, but they could. So that would, I mean, you can address it. You just have to build those side walls a little taller for six feet. But I think that needs to be addressed, not just the side walls. And this is on both sides of the property as well.
But if the, if the wall was down at the bottom, it would do the same thing as what you're saying. It doesn't have to be at the top. They can fence off the bottom backyard.
That might be easier.
That's going to be the easiest.
It'd be way easier than.
That's what I'm saying, rather than doing it up here at the top. Because of all those things, you can fence it off down at the bottom.
And then you're done.
And then you don't have to worry about it.
I agree.
And then, and then lock the back gate.
I would also be curious what kind of gate it, I mean, if we're doing a childcare, I think you probably should put some perforated, you know, screening or whatever behind it, just so you don't have. Just something like that would make it a lot safer and, and make sure it has an actual good locking mechanism.
Well, I'm sure the state has to approve it too. They're going to have to approve the play area and all that.
You got to make gates. You know how for kids to pop the latch and go out of some gates. So you'd have to really make sure you had a good locking mechanism that kids couldn't unlock on that road.
Chain it with a padlock. I don't care.
Yeah. So those would be my main things is I would, I would perforate the gate, you know, or put a privacy screen on the gate with a padlock on that gate and then put the privacy walls below the retaining wall on the side yards. So that way the kids stay in the backyard.
Say they navigate themselves upstairs and then come out the front. I mean, there's, there's nothing to contain them, but that's.
That's the same with, that's the same with every daycare. I mean, go out on the front yards. Responsibility to keep them in the house.
Right.
So every time that, that this board has faced this issue where the CCNRs say one thing and we're looking at the code. This body has done historically is just assess the code. And homeowner and the, you know, whoever's managing CCRs, the association, kind of battle that out.
Every single HOA in town is going to say the same thing. They're all going to say you can't operate a business. I mean, 90% of them say, they're all just boilerplate. They say the same thing. Doesn't mean the HOA can't, you know, have an issue with her and she has to deal with a deed restriction or whatever, however they decide to handle that, but that's not what we're addressing. We're addressing, does this meet city code or not? And then, and then saying, hey, if you've got CCNR issues, you should deal with it.
Yeah, we, we don't spend time in the CCNRs interpreting what they mean or say to the residents. I do think though, that knowledge that there's a CCNR in place that says business use is not allowed is certainly the basis to, for, let's say, a vote to say, you know, we, the motion is to decline on the basis of blank, blank. And also that it appears that they're going to enter into a, an HOA conflict if they, if the city licenses this. In other words, you know, get your HOA to change their CCNRs and then, then bring back your application when that's, when that's there. And so we don't get involved in the business of running the association, voting on the boards or interpreting that. But if, if, if you feel that there's plain language that says this isn't allowed, I think that that's, that's, that's a very fair reason to consider as you make a motion or consider how to vote on a motion.
Well, you said earlier that they can vote to change CCNRs.
They can.
And if they, my, my problem with getting involved with that is if they, if we approve something and then they further on down the line, then they, they decide to change their CCNRs because we approved something to say they can't have it. Then they're going to come back to us and say, well, our CCNRs don't say that.
Correct. So there's.
I feel like, I feel like we would be getting into a, more into the, like you're saying, worrying about what CCNRs are saying.
Correct. So there, there's two layers that, that precede this meeting on that application. The first one is the staff desk that accepts applications. And at that level, there is an application, there is a, a measure of compliance that has to be met to make an application. But it's things like name, address, contact, you know, location within the city. They're not difficult things, but they are things that, you know, if you don't meet them, they don't even accept your application. At the application acceptance step, they don't judge its success or failure. Their job is to let any land app, that land use applicant that can, can qualify to submit an application. Staff then has a review and if there's a serious code issue, staff could in theory deny that application on a serious code issue. And that happens. Sometimes that happens. Sometimes there's a sewer. Sometimes there's just stuff that's not known that, that very plainly makes it a problematic application. If staff doesn't throw it out on a, on a known technicality, it comes to this board because that's this board's role for the city. They are the administrative board on land use applications like this. And so nowhere in the staff level do they say, check for CCNRs and verify whether there's a restriction. And so this, this public hearing where someone could show up and say, hey, there's a CCNR that, that is a problem, is the place and time for that. And so I don't think we're interpreting it. I think a public comment has said it exists. I went to look and see and I did verify that that does exist. I read the language of it for you. And I think that, that's, that's a fact that the public provided, that you can very much weigh in a, in a decision on a motion or a vote on a motion.
So this Commissioner Mitchell, I'll just kind of share my thoughts. Like one, I want to be mindful of the residents because I, I personally feel like it would affect you know, them and having the traffic in and out of their. So that's one. But two, obviously, if you're a parent or and need somewhere for your kids to go, that is a need to have an, an inexpensive option for someone to watch your kids. So I get both sides. Personally, I mean, there are daycares all over town that are in a, in a commercial setting versus in a residential setting. So I know it's possible, but so kind of a mixed, like mixed, yeah, feelings.
I have a question for you there. You have a daycare right down the street, right from your house, and it's been there for years. And I mean, I've never seen any problems with any residents for any of it. And it's the same exact thing as this. You know, I mean, everybody that we ever, every time somebody comes in for one of these, all the neighbors are upset. Everybody's mad. Everybody has an HOA that, that denies it. And you never hear a single complaint after that. I mean, it's just if, if we deny every one of these because an HOA had restrictions on it, which they all do, we wouldn't have any daycare. Except for a couple of, of them that can afford a commercial place, which is few and far between. You know, and, and not to mention, you know, people are trying to, to run a business. I mean, allows this type of, of thing. Yes, CCNRs don't, but it's not our place. We, it's our place to recognize that, yeah, they've got CCNRs and that's fine. I don't think our place to try and interpret them either. You know, we acknowledge it and, and she has an issue that she's going to have to deal with, you know, on that basis. But that doesn't, that, that shouldn't affect the way we, you know, decide, does this meet city code and state code? Yes, sir. You know, and that's what we're here to do.
Yeah, it would be more to address safety concerns or does the need, yeah, need adjustments to accommodate that type of practice for the safety of the kids that are going to attend.
We're not here to, to, to solve disputes between HOAs and, and homeowners. We're not here to, to say whether it's a good business decision or not. We're here to say, does it, does it mean state code? Does it mean city code? And are there safety concerns, you know, for the kids? And that's what we're looking at.
In some ways though, I still do feel as like a body that we are mindful of other residents as well and defected.
Commissioner Tuppo, I, I would agree with what you're saying. Commissioner Mitchell, I, I could see with 16 students that there would be significant stacking, drop off, pickup flow. And I don't think the, the rock, the retaining wall in the back is safe for children, even without, with or without a fence. I think six, I think 16 children is too much for this neighborhood. I would be okay with probably eight. But I think anything more than age belongs in a commercial area. I don't think this, this setup is actually conducive for 16 children either.
Commissioner, you're, do you have any thoughts?
I see Ms. Sanchez and all the work that she's done. I see all, all the time and energy that staff has put into this, going through all of the various elements that need to be complied with. I know there's further due process from the state to ensure that the gate is, and, and the, and the block wall is all up to code for them. And I also can see that the CCNRs have been in place for years. And that it's a community where the neighbors are part of it and they, how they all think and feel matters. And these are like the shared understanding of what we're doing in this neighborhood are the CCNRs. And so I, I, I think there's, for me, there's not like a one clear answer. I think it's kind of like a balancing of the, of the interests. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm still kind of feeling into it. It, it's and I'm also getting used to what our role is. So.
Baptism by fire. I'm just, so those CCNRs are saying that you can't even run a construction company out of your house.
Well, yeah, let, let me entertain, you know, the old, the old hypothetical. Let's say that we had an application for a welding shop, right? The city issues business licenses for welders too. The first problem that one would have is that our city requires that that come to a location located in the right zone, so a commercial zone. So that one probably wouldn't get past the staff level because this is a residential zone and that's a commercial use. But in theory, somebody could weld on a lot and, you know, weld. And I'm sure there's a lot of residential houses where there is some welding that happens inside a garage or, or, or a building. And, and you know, nobody complains, so it, it happens. The question really is, does the city council take the comment, acknowledge it, make sure it's known to the applicant and then say, look, as far as the city goes, you're good. But you know, we've got some red flags about your HOA and you better be ready for, you know, whatever enforcement the HOA chooses to do. Which is what has been our traditional history, which is we don't take the HOA issues and try to apply them or enforce them. But, but certainly acknowledge them if we hear about them and, you know, discuss them through, if we need to discuss them through. Or do you say, look, we're going to deny you so that you don't have to have an HOA fighting, right? I don't know that either side of those is a perfect solution for us. A denial on that basis could trigger an appeal and then we'd have to follow it through our appeal process. But, but yeah, it's certainly, we in Washington City know that HOAs. HOAs exist, CCNRs exist, and there's court filings at the district court every day between HOAs and their members and compliance with those CCNRs. And so they are, they are valid be, and, and the members who, and them.
Another thought too, and I know we've had these before. We had a lot more public come and share, you know, though, if there was a, a neighborhood that was concerned that it was going there, there was a lot more public attendance to share their concerns. Tonight, you know, it's the HOA president and the vice president too. So are we worried about residents that may not even care that it's there? Or otherwise, would they be here to voice concern?
I, I, I feel like it's an HOA fight that we should stay out of.
Yes.
My personal opinion. Um, I understand HOAs have it, but in the same sense, you know, there could be a guy that's running a construction company, his office is in his house. I mean, they, they say you can't run an office in your house, but, or work from home, if, if that's the case. And.
And so that's maybe a better example than my welding example. Um, but I mean, there, you could, yeah, the city has a, this license.
Most likely, most likely in that neighborhood. And I don't think it's our place to get in, to start picking and choosing which businesses can or can't, or say, oh, we're going to, like you said, I, I don't think it's a good idea to say, well, we're going to deny her so we stop them from having a problem. I mean, she's the one that chooses to, to, you know, apply for a license, which she can legally apply for. And if it has an issue with the CCNRs, that's between her and the, and the HOA. If they have a problem that, I mean, she's choosing to accept whatever consequences that is. But if we start picking and choosing who's the winner and who's the loser.
Exactly.
Then you've got a whole, it works with people that are operating businesses in that HOA that, that they're not getting, you know, in trouble for or whatever. And suddenly you get lawsuits. I mean, it's, it's not a jurisdiction.
Maybe it would be, maybe it would be appropriate to send it to city council with our concern that.
And that's what we've always done. We've always just acknowledged, hey, we acknowledge that they're.
I think this is ours, guys. This is ours. We, this doesn't go to city council. This stops with us.
So, use permit's yours.
Oh, yeah.
This is how we've always done it. I mean, we've now made it very public that she has an issue with the HOA. She's going to have to deal with that.
The, the only thing that I know that we've done before is when we do a conditional use permit, it stays with that, with that lot forever. And I like, I liked on these daycares, I liked on these daycares where we tied them to the applicant.
Yes.
As long as the applicant kept it up and kept the standings and then it stayed that way. So, so that it was that way. I, I thought when we did that with the, with the daycares, that was a better way of doing it than just a blanket statement for, if they, that way they can't necessarily sell it as a, hey, you have a daycare here. Market it that way because it's already got a conditional use. The conditional use is with the person running it at that facility, which we have the ability to do, correct?
Correct. Um, there's, the city would distinguish between an at-home daycare and a commercial daycare. And so an at-home daycare is, is very personal to the operator as well as the property.
Yeah.
Out of, we have quite a few in neighborhoods that were zoned and built out before kind of modern zones and CCNRs, you know. The neighborhood where I live has, has many, uh, because there aren't CCNRs, right? And so those ones, there, there is no discussion at the city about CCNRs anyway, but also there are no CCNRs. And so those ones tend to lend themselves to these type of uses. Um, and so, so yeah, the, the question is, how, how deep do we get involved with interpreting the meaning of the CCNRs? And the next question is, do we ever enforce them? And the answer is no, we never enforce them. We try not to be, ever be involved with interpreting the meaning of them. Regulatory scheme, the only time we ever ask about CCNRs and verify their existence is when plats come through that have common area or private roads. We verify that there's a legal entity that will own those and, and have the responsibility towards the city for keeping and maintaining them. Of plats of, of developments, we don't ever ask questions about the existence of CCNRs. Um, we recognize they're there, that they come and go, they change and modify as, as boards of associations wish to do so. But we don't administer those in the city's administration.
And as you said right there, they will, they, they can change them. So if someone does have a conditional use permit for that, and then they decide to change it, they could say, well, that doesn't meet our CCNRs now. Therefore, I don't think we should be involved with saying, yes, the CCNRs, or no, the CCNRs don't, because we could approve it and then, you know.
So.
And then the CCNRs would change and say, oh, no, you can't have, you can't have whatever it is. I, I feel like that's a CCNR battle that we, like you're saying, we, we don't really need to be involved in with our one attorney.
Yeah, what if we take away the CCNRs? I don't think that's a concern. And I know in the past too, we have limited the number. We've made that adjustment in the past. So maybe that's the discussion is 16 or less? And what effect does the traffic have on the residents than worrying about CCNRs and getting involved in that?
I wouldn't, I'll add to that. I think for me, after, you know, continuing to deliberate here, I think what matters is that the public knows what's up, that either CCNRs are part of our conversation or they're not. I think given our history of them not being part of the conversation, I would just say, let's keep doing that. Um, and, and let that be part of a private conversation. I think it's relevant. It, it can come up. Um, but I'm kind of in favor of just, you know, looking at this from city code and moving on.
Maybe another way to describe what you're saying is, this policy is not to interject itself into community associations when it's not already there. And nothing about what the city is saying means that we think the HOA shouldn't find somebody every day for a violation and file an action with the district court to enjoin a use. And so it's not getting involved with telling them what their options and restrictions mean, or say, or limiting their ability to enforce them.
Exactly.
And so an HOA person might feel, well, gosh, that sure, sure would be nice for you to tell us what to do there. Um, the challenge is when you invite the government to tell you what to do with your private stuff, you also open the Pandora's box of graded when the government tells you what you do, what to do with your private stuff. And so these stayed out of it. I think the applicant's heard enough to know that there's a CCNR and a potential challenge. Uh, you know, the, the, the CC, the HOA folks have advised her of that publicly in this public hearing, which is why we have these. We had enough time. I verified that that does exist. She's now going to weigh, weigh her, her options and, and make decisions there. Um, and, and so will you. And, and so we're operating in the same city, in the same space, but on, on different planes of decision and, and, and pursuit there. And we won't pursue the CCNRs, their meaning or their enforcement, but we acknowledge they're there and.
The contract law than, than public policy, CCR. So let it stay there. Yeah.
This Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve C dash 25 dash 09, a request for conditional use permit for a childcare facility located at 562 East Rice Springs Lane with the four findings and nine conditions outlined by staff. And I'll add, um, on to, A, that it, that it be block wall fencing to match the existing block wall fencing at the bottom.
Why were you doing that at the bottom? They can do, they can do wrought iron fence at the bottom and keep it that way too.
Okay.
I just a fence.
Sure. Do they have a, they have a fence, um, at the bottom of the retaining wall as opposed to the top on both sides? Um, and also that they have a, a secure padlock on that gate. Um, so there's no use of the, of the off-street road at the bottom of the property.
Are you tying it to the individual person?
And adding a, Bonnie, adding a 10th condition that, that the conditional use permit is tied to the applicant.
With her.
Not the property. As long as she owns the property, not.
As long as she has her license.
As long as she meets the conditions.
I'll second the motion.
I have a first by Commissioner Anderson, a second by Commissioner Yor. Individual voting. Commissioner Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tupow.
Aye.
Commissioner Yor.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Bullock. I'm an aye as well. And item number five is adjournment.
This Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we adjourn.
Commissioner Tupow, I second that.
I'm a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will take a short break before we start the land use. All right. Welcome to the Land Use Authority Meeting for November 5th, 2025. Item one on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
This Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Your, I'll second.
I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell and second by Commissioner Yor. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, approval of the minute, of the Land Use Authority minutes from October 15th, 2025.
This Commissioner Mitchell, I move that we approve the minutes from our previous meeting.
Your, your and I'll second.
I have a first by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Yor. All in favor?
Aye.
Item three, declaration of abstentions or conflicts. Does anyone have anything with this agenda?
No.
All right. Item 4A is a preliminary plat approval for the Hartwood Farms subdivision located at approximately 1410 South Heritage Fields Drive. We will turn this over to Eldon.
This particular subdivision is proposing two lots on an area covering 13.69 acres. Pull up the plat map here. We can dig into the specifics. Lot one is 5.44 acres and lot two is 1.19 acres. And the area left for future development is 7.06 acres. Designation at this location is open space, RA1 and agricultural 5. The surrounding zoning is PUDR to the north, A20 to the east, R110 to the south, and agricultural 20 to the. Proposed subj- subdivision conforms to the approved zoning. There is a master planned trail running adjacent to the river and is shown next to the Riprap Armor berm that this development will provide trail easement for. And as shown on the plan, the request meets the subdivision requirements and other city ordinances as it relates to this location. I just want to reiterate that the development here will be required to put that rip rap in on their expense. Um, and the city's planning to build that master planned trail when other easements are obtained in that area. Um, we want to avoid piecemealing trail together. Just doesn't make sense to maintain a small piece of trail there. And then the block wall that comes will be the applicant's or the developer's responsibility if, if they so wish. Staff has reviewed the request and recommends the Land Use Authority approve the preliminary plat for Hartwood, Hartwood Farms subdivision based on the findings and conditions stated in staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thanks, Eldon.
Eldon, so, I mean, it says it's a two lot subdivision, but it's sort of a three lot subdivision right now, right? Because the, the third chunk is just not labeled, but it's still technically its own lot, right?
Yes. Yeah, two lots will bring residential units. Yeah, two lots will bring residential units, the third will remain ag use.
My question Eldon, it says though. The north side of fourteen ten south will be improved with future developments of Hartwood. How long is that future development gonna be? I mean, I feel like it's, I understand holding off for a little bit, but. It's, I'm just curious, I mean, if they only put one lot in there. If somebody buys that whole lot and decides that's what they want. Do they have to put that in or should we be doing it? Or should we be doing it now instead of later? That's, that would be my only concern with, with that is, I mean, I don't know what holds up later on and. But in order to get it done.
So this application essentially seeks to have that parcel remain in the historic use that it is in today. And the city does not typically require installation improvements on lands that have not, that are not changing from a prior historic use to a new permitted use. And so in this situation, staff has administered this to not require that. Acknowledge that if that portion were to become developed, that that would be required. I do see where the planning commission might determine that there are issues of that not being required with these two phases. That you know, a portion of that parcel being built out is sufficient to require the whole thing and that would be within your discretion. Decide if that's what you think is right for the health, safety and welfare of the community or the circulation of traffic or whatever the, whatever the concern is that you might connect to that needing to be required at this time.
That's the main, this Commissioner, that's the main concern I have about this too. Just having that one point of entry at the end of fourteen ten, it is such an awkward little street. It's like, when I drive down that street regularly, it is so narrow. If there's a car parked on the road, you have to slow, slow down in order to be able to get around it. And so it's, it's, it's an awkward situation. And to add another point of entry right there without correcting that, I think, I don't know, it gives me a little bit of heartburn. You know, and it's also difficult because we can't see how those other seven acres are going to be used. It'd be nice if we could kind of like see the whole plan and then kind of like understand how it's all going to be used. But because we can't and they just want to develop that side of it, like I, I wonder if they'd be open to developing fourteen ten, it needs to be done.
I agree, I think it needs to be added because it's such a small piece, it's not like it's. And it's like phase six down the road or whatever, I mean, it's just.
Well, the utilities are already in right there, right? On whatever utilities are in on that fourteen ten are already there, they'd basically just be paving it. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, I think we should be at it.
But the city's looking at doing it, not putting it on the developer. So they'd put it in and then you'd come and rip it out? Okay. Just like the rest of them. I feel like we could.
He were to come in and rip it out like, like in all other roads, they rebuild it back to the state of the museum.
No, I understand that, but I'm just, I'm just saying if we could come to an agreement that once the city put that storm drain through there. They paid for the paving, I mean, I don't know if that's something we could do, but it seems like it would help. Both parties, the city and that, rather than paving it and then ripping it all out whenever that time comes. Or if that gets developed, then put it in. I feel like it'd be a better mix for all involved, in my opinion.
Well, the.
Cause it's just adding two homes right now. And it'd be nice to have it in, but either. Either have, when the next seven acres, whatever gets developed, have that, have it do it then. And then the city will just have to rip it out and put it back in like they always do. Or if they, when the city decides to put that in, take those funds and put it into that to do it then.
Well, the chance that the next seven acres never get developed. And so you've got a forever, you know, issue until the city has to come and just widen it at their own expense and so. Roads are extracted from development and the land underneath them is extracted because as a matter of public policy. Folks that take land that's not developed and then subdivide it and invite more people to it. The policy presumes that there's a duty to provide roadways and spaces for, for ingress and egress. And so if you feel like that road needs to be completed. This is the land owner and this is the application that, that you could attach that to if you wanted to. Or if you feel like, you know what, it's serviceable, you could wait and say, we'll attach it to the next seven acres, but. For a decade or two or three now, that road has been sitting there unfinished, waiting for this land user to come with an application. The developer bill it up to the property line. And so this is the, this is the applicant that we've been waiting to show up if, if we were in fact hoping that that road would.
Well, will that storm drain go in regardless?
What is the storm drain service and why are they not putting the storm drain in, why is the city putting it?
The storm, the storm drain project that we're looking at is a master planned storm drain. It's an upgrade for the entire city system. So we're talking like a sixty inch pipe that we're looking to bring down through there and stuff. So it's not a, it's not a project that isn't tied to the, this development at all, so.
And when John says down through there, John's saying through the public road right of way.
Yeah, you can see, you can see along that southern boundary, we called out, there's an existing storm drain easement. And then we also called out a proposed storm drain easement that we'll be working with the property owner on, on acquiring and stuff. For this storm drain project.
Is that to help with the property that is east side of Washington Fields Road? It's not undeveloped?
To some degree, it's a bigger trunk line that goes on across, up through the alleyway up there, tied into Washington Nam Road. And all those storm drains all up and along the other side of Washington Fields Road and up to Am Road and stuff, so. Yeah, it's a pretty major project. In regards to fourteen ten, this was an item that I had a conversation with, with the owner and stuff with. Cause it was a concern of ours in regards to when this might develop. I had them put the note on there, so it was very blatant for, for you and for, for everybody else to know that that's kind of where we settle on. If we were looking at a, a bigger development where we had more than two lots. I would definitely have been pushing for fourteen ten to be expanded, whereas we have two lots. And fourteen ten isn't the main route that you would probably take in and out of there and stuff. I erred to the side of going with, finishing that up in, in a future phase. So that's kind of where we landed as, as staff in reviewing that.
When? When do you foresee that line coming through?
We have it in, we have it in our master plan, they are working there in the beginning phases of design. There's some stuff that we have to work out with Saint George in regards to the upper portion of the project. Cause we're going to be utilizing some infrastructure that they had in place where sold. Old water main and stuff like that, major transmission line and stuff that we'll be using, so trying to get that all buttoned up. It could be a year, it could be two years.
Okay.
So John, I have a question.
Sure.
Just with. Size of the, of the storm drain easement, if you're talking a sixty inch pipe. I mean, I just barely put in a forty inch, a forty eight inch storm drain and we had a twenty five. Five foot easement and thought it was enough and we couldn't, we couldn't do it with, with the equipment and the pipe and everything else, just trying to get access. And we ended up having to get a thirty five foot easement for that, so when you're talking. I mean, in total, you're talking a seventeen foot easement on that, so I mean. You're gonna rip out the other side where you got the other fourteen feet of the existing there, pretty big pipe. Cause my question is, two questions, one, is the easement big enough and two. Shouldn't it include the back of the, of the gutter to where? Be running, you know, inlets and stuff? I mean, right now, the way it's drawn, it's, it's not including that, it's. But briefly, and they'll let John finish everything I missed. So there's easements for the perennial use, which is, you know, the space within which the pipe sits and the maintenance trucks will run. And then frequently when there's a project like of the scope that John's described. One of the steps will be to go obtain construction easements, which is additional width so that you have room to stack dirt and move pipes. It's just a whole lot easier to have an easement that's big enough to work in before rather than after somebody's put something on there. Absolutely is, the challenge is, it's also a lot more expensive to buy easements, the width of the construction easement. And so usually we, we pay the construction easement price, which is for a limited time. And then, then you no longer have the right to use it, so that makes it a cheaper acquisition. Say be at least to the back of the inlet boxes, I mean, it's not drawn that way currently, so.
Yes, I think.
Because those would have to be in the easement, right?
The easement that's being shown is, is basically an easement that Paul was working on with, with Rick and stuff for this. Ultimately, they would be, you know, when phase, the future phase came along, they would have to dedicate the full additional right of way, which would be. The additional twenty five feet for the additional fifty foot right of way for that street. Then behind that, we would have our ten foot P W typical for a subdivision for putting in the dry utilities and stuff like that, so. But yeah, like that was referencing, we would have our, our permanent easement and then during construction, we'd also have a temporary construction easement, so.
I guess the point I'm getting to is. I would like to see, I, I don't care if we don't finish that road right now, but when that, after you put that pipeline in. It makes the most sense just to finish it right then. That way it's done if that never, cause if that never gets done, I'd hate to put it in now, have you come back, rip out the road in a year. And then that. And then that never get built or however, I just assume if it's not going to get built. After you rip it out, then put the road in.
Are you saying something like assess the land, the applicant for the cost of building that road today, just put it in the bank and then use that whenever the.
Or if they, and then have the city build the road?
No, have the developer, I, I can't, I'm along those same lines that Thad's thinking. Like I don't like the idea of the road going in and then getting ripped out and then have it patched road for the rest of its existence. But could we structure it so that we place the burden, the burden, place the expense of that road on the developer? But have it go in after the pipe is in place?
So, so one of. One of the things that, that Utah law permits to be exacted is the land underneath the road. And, and, and we get a lot of comments from developers. Usually not very happy comments about they don't get paid for the land under the road. And the state of Utah allows cities to exact that land ownership with the same policy of. Public roads allow public movement and, and are good for communities. The city also can exact roads. Sorry, also exacts the cost of installation and construction of the road, the first, the first version that gets accepted. And then from there, the city takes it, maintains it forever and replaces it and all of that. But, but there's an exaction both in the land underneath it as well as the, 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 the project, the actual construction of the road. City then would inspect and accept and then they dedicate it to the city there forever, released from any more duties or obligations or liabilities associated with the roadway. Their, their duty of exaction that comes with development. This one's unique because they're not trying to break it up into the smallest lots and the greatest density, like is the most common thing we get. And so the ones with super high density, there's rarely any debate about the road and when it has happened because it's so much traffic. This one's unique because it's trying to preserve significant acres of historic use as well as, you know, get, get approval so they can, you know. Convert some of it from an agricultural use to a residential use.
The idea of the road going in, even whether it go in now or immediately after the pipe is there. Just so that it's, yeah, clean, cleaner to build.
I, I feel similarly, you know, that road fourteen ten, it needs to be finished. It is, it is just, it's, it, it doesn't make sense in the neighborhood, the way it is currently configured. And when you drive down it, it just feels weird. And I don't see how cars are going to be going down any other road than fourteen ten, cause they're going to come in off three hundred, they're going to turn right. And that road actually bends and turns into fourteen ten, that's going to be the access point. And so now there's going to be more cars going down that awkward little road to get in, even if it's just two more houses. Right now, there's like five or six houses on there, but when you walk down the road, it's like every single person who's on that house right now, if they have a truck that's parked on the street. If they have a trailer, if they have a car that even like is on the road a little bit. It's so weird, it's so pinchy, it's just awkward, it needs to be fixed. I, I think for me that knowing that there's a big storm drain that's going in there kind of shifts it. I don't know if it makes sense to tear it, to, to put it all in now and then tear it out. But whatever the appropriate process is for ensuring that as soon as that storm drain is in. That full thing gets developed, so it's like as soon as possible. You know, I, I think whatever that appropriate process is, is maybe what we should do.
I have another question for you, John, maybe helps with. I mean, I'm assuming your, your storm drain's going in the middle of the street, but where, where is, is the storm drain going? The street that's currently not paved, or it's going right in the middle and so you're gonna be ripping out both sides anyways?
It'll be under the, the new section.
Completely?
We have our water and sewer already underneath the.
That was mine.
Yeah. Our, our existing utilities are under that existing section, so it'll be fully on that north part of that.
There's been times where I've seen, you know, middle grounds where, where you would say something like, you know, finish the full width of the roadway and put a curb on it, but you know. Allow the sidewalk and other things to, to wait until the.
Yeah.
There's other middle grounds there, connect to where you're. There's no reason to do sidewalk, definitely, I mean.
Well, we don't know how the layout's going to be either, if that's the backup.
It's mainly, it's mainly because if. The problem is, is like you were saying, it's just that it forms a weird accent where they come out of this community and. If they go straight, it's not an issue, but if they turn, they're kind of zigzagging in and dodging people's cars and everything else. But we also have that in other places of the city too, so.
I live not far from this and, but I'm on Heritage Fields Drive and. I'm into the neighborhood, I could go straight and then go right and then go left and then go right. Right, and then I take the road right before this that goes down to my road. And everybody who lives on this road, they turn right and they go down that road. So I think that's like the flow, they're going to come in off three hundred and go right down that awkward road. So even if it's two or three more houses, it's. It needs, needs to be done, so that I like what, I like what you're saying, I like the idea of, you know. Just doing the cheap asphalt, push the asphalt out, push it into the fence, create an actual road there. Without investing too much infrastructure this time, since we're going to have to just pull it all up. But if it's, if it's not very expensive, I think that's a really good middle ground.
Are you shaking your head no, John? Want to tell us why?
My recommendation, if you, if you're really wanting to push to have this street put in at some point in time.
Can you speak into the mics if we can get that on the recording?
If you're wanting to, to make as part of your motion, the installation of that street. My recommendation would be that it comes after any installation of that storm drain. Anything that you put in there ahead of time will just be a waste and actually increase the overall cost of our project to come in. So my recommendation would be to not do anything until, if you're, if that's what you want to do is, is force the issue of that street going in at this point in time. At least wait until after we're done with that storm drain project.
That's exactly what I was thinking, wait till that storm drain goes through and then work with it. It should save both parties money by putting it in after the storm drain goes in. I don't know.
That's the thing, I mean. Do you have any good ideas on how to, how to phase this?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna open up the public hearing portion of this real quick, since I haven't done that. I think. This gentleman, we're going to open up the public hearing portion of this, would anyone like to speak to it?
I've, I've spoken to all the residents, I've, I've been there since that subdivision's almost been built, I've been there for two decades. You said how long is it, Dennis Bailey, sorry. And we don't oppose this, the only thing that we that live in that neighborhood. The only thing that we that live in that neighborhood need is the street. You have one car on there, try getting a fire engine through there or the garbage truck. He's really, I gotta give him credit, but he drives at one mile an hour trying to get through that road. That road is a significant issue. When we built there, Dan Hoop said, yeah, it's an understanding that it'll be finished when they start developing this property over here. And I even came to the city and spoke to a gentleman here. I wish I would have wrote it down. I don't know who. And I asked him about that and he goes, yeah, someday that road will be finished when they start developing that property. It'll be a key element in that development. And I understand that this piece isn't being developed, but the other half is, and it's all part of one big project. And I understand the storm drain and I understand that they're not building on that historical part that's remaining agricultural. But we've waited twenty years for something to happen on that. And we've been patient and understanding and we knew it was there and that's what we had to deal with. But now something is happening and we would just like to see something with our road to happen. Like you say, you've driven down it. Most of you know what that road is like. So we're only asking for something to help us out with that road. And then the only other thing we had a concern about was, you know, we've got that eighty, eighty unit piece to the west of us, you know, the Heritage Field subdivision. And that's, and I didn't oppose that at all. It's, it is what it is. But we're going to have, we've got all that traffic coming through our subdivision or going further to the south and hitting Sandia, two thousand south. And there's no entrance onto Washington Fields Road planned on this. So we're concerned about, is there going to be an entry someday onto Washington Fields Road for this particular subdivision that will one day go in? Or is that something that has to be addressed later? I don't know. But that was something that came up in our neighborhood about the egress ingress of that subdivision. It's already harder than heck to get onto Washington Fields Road from our subdivision. It's, you gotta be fairly patient and sometimes cross your fingers.
So in a traditional development scenario, the city's window to require the installation of a road starts at preliminary plat application and then the city can refuse approval of a final plat until that's been built and installed. And so one of the challenges we have here is a public works representative is saying, look, it would sure be cheaper and better for the city to not have to tear out a road when we do our pipeline. But there is not a mechanism that's in place outside of a separate contract that would allow the city to exact a roadway if the city were to approve a final plat on this preliminary plat in eight or 10 months, for example, right? And so I think that's part of what perhaps the engineer for the applicant might help us understand better or propose. But but yeah, would essentially be a contract of some terms that would need to be acceptable to the, to the decision makers. But yeah, the, the window to get roads built is traditionally the window between the preliminary plat, which is what we're looking at today. And then the final plat, which allows them to sell lots and change ownership and all of that stuff.
So there could one day be an entry into that subdivision off of Washington Fields Road?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Appears that way, the way that they've designed it in the roundabout, it has the branch that looks like it's going to extend up to Washington Fields Road, but that's not, there's no guarantees there. And then the timing of that happening.
Washington Fields Road is a, is rated as a large arterial and there's standards that limit the proximity between different driveways. And there's not a driveway very far away from that one. And so they would have to, they would have to come and get approval from the city for a new access point off of Fields Road. And it would have to meet the distancing, both on, on the side of the road that it's using as well as line, line up with other access points on the other side of the road. And so, and so I don't know that there's enough distance for that. That's part of why you don't see many more driveways along Fields Road than what's already there is the city's regulated those into certain points of, of turning. And so I think the best answer today is that they probably don't have enough space to put a driveway in there. But the codes exist, they could try and, and see if they could fit one in somehow. But yeah, I don't think right now that that's the reality. The reality is that they would come out those roads that are already there.
That wasn't as significant a big deal as getting fourteen-ten finished.
Yeah.
And, and we could still be another five, we, you know, it's on the master plan. What's the master plan? Five years, 10 years, we're back to square one again.
So that you bring up a concern of mine, I guess, looking at the existing roads and the distance between them. Why could there not be another road tying into Washington Fields Road? And maybe, John, can you help us answer?
John will know those numbers better than me.
I mean, the, the distance from Washington Dam Road to that first entrance and same thing going to River Shadow or whatever, the distance to that road is significantly different.
Yeah, I took a look at this earlier, just in case this came up. There would be, there would be room from, say Rancho Vista up. It's distance of six hundred and sixty feet. It's a major, major collector, major arterial. So there could be an unsignaled intersection on coming out of this parcel. There's clear distance, six sixty from the north and from the south from the streets that are there. So under our, under our rules, under our code, yes, a, a, an access point could be granted if they so requested with a part of their development. I'll let them speak as to what their plan is for future there though.
I just have a little comment about that, which is every car that gets added to whatever lots end up in the subdivision, if there's not an access point, already coming out of that neighborhood, the, the light from Washington Dam Road backs up and it's a real problem. It's, it, it can take five minutes to make a left-hand turn there. There's no lights and getting. So actually, if there was another access point over there, I think the neighborhood would love that. And even if they add more lots over there, I think that would make a huge difference to how people feel about that. Because it would alleviate some of the stress and pressure that that neighborhood is already feeling, especially with all those other lots that just got added. There's a lot of congestion pressure going on right there, right? So I'm not sure what, you know, that was another concern I had about this from the beginning was it's difficult to make decisions about this because we can't see the grand vision. We don't know what's happening with those other.
But they're, and they're.
Sounds like.
Yeah, they're, they're not, you know, they're ultimately, you know, it does all public roads down there. So they, they can access and use those, those roads and stuff. I don't have a mechanism in which to currently, you know, require them to make an access point onto Fields Road. So it's kind of one of those where we have to work with the developer to try and.
Yeah, makes sense.
If they were doing something that was of much higher density, yes, then I would have more of a mechanism in which to force additional access points. Because typically what our, our code and stuff reads is when I hit the magic number of thirty, I have to have two access points. I'm at two with this, at least what they're proposing and stuff. So I'm kind of tied at this point in time like that. But I, I definitely understand what you're saying. We see the traffic pattern and, and everything. So, no, I appreciate it.
I don't know about you, but I usually turn right and go down and make a U-turn at the churches and come back. That's about the only way you can get back onto Washington Fields Road out of that subdivision during certain times of the day. It is crazy. Again, that wasn't as big an issue with us as fourteen-ten south. Having something done with that. So we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let the applicant speak in a second, but is there any more people that have, any more public hearings?
I, I was going to just add, is that one thing? So I just added up, what do we cost? And I think this is significant reason to not pave it, although I understand why, the good reasons to pave it. But in terms of cost, it costs them forty-one thousand dollars to pave it now. And the city had cost about sixty thousand or so to rip it out and, and repay it. So you're, you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars. You know? It's not insignificant burden to put on somebody.
All right, I will close the public hearing portion of this. Now, would the applicant like to speak to us?
First of all, we're really not developers. We're a family and this property has been in our family for probably a hundred years plus. And our goal is to build a home for my husband and I and my son and his family. And then keep the other pasture land and farmland for cows and horses. The easement for a road along fourteen-ten, we're not against, it's more a money issue. We're not making money on this. We're putting money into it. So basically it's the cost really. So we would, we just wanted to go in, have a circle big enough for a fire truck to turn around. We don't go up fourteen-ten. We go out, my husband works down and out that way. We go out and go out the main way. We do not even go up and down fourteen-ten. So you know, basically. Yeah, we, it's too small. It's like a little lane. It's kind of like a little lane, don't you? It would kind of like a little private lane. But we would, if, if you make us go and come off of Washington Fields Road, we will just scrap it and keep it all farmland forever. We don't want to do that. We want it to be private. We want it to be intimate. And that's our goal. It's just ending up costing us a fortune. We can't afford to put fourteen-ten in right now. So we are at the point of retirement and we're on a budget. So there you have it.
So Cory, your estimation of forty thousand, that would be out, like say we wait and put that.
That's asphalt, asphalt curb and gutter. And that's actually.
So.
I don't know if the city wants to put any money into it, if they want to give us permits or whatever, do a trade. I, you know, we're, we're workable there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking in my mind, yeah, forty thousand is not significant. I mean, a twenty thousand to each owner of the one and lot one and lot two. It's not a huge burden, but then would definitely help out that your neighbors.
Here's my thought on this. I think the idea, the idea of, of taking the land and, and forcing the street to be put on, you know, to be, to be paid for by development is with the understanding that, that they're bringing on additional burden to the city and they're bringing on additional people that are living there, paying there, driving there, et cetera. But where they're not planning on doing that, you know, they own the property. I mean, they, they have the right to, to do with, with their property what they want. And, and, and that doesn't mean we have to say, hey, you have to put this road in as if it were a hundred unit development. So I don't think that's particularly fair. Now, at the same time, nice for these other homeowners if that ever gets done, but it's, you know, it's just, I mean, when their houses went in, they're developing and that's just what it was. You, you do half the road and it is what it is. I mean, I don't know. If they, if, if the plan is to leave it, leave it pasture land, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I don't think it's quite fair to say, hey, you have to pave this at some point in time because they're not going to develop it. There's no any, any cause to, to say that. I mean, if they decide to sell it or develop it, then sure. But if not.
Yeah, I agree with that.
This, I don't think we have the right to say, hey, you have to pave this road here, you know, alongside your farm. You know, I mean, we haven't done that with Staley Farms or any of these other farms around town, you know, made in, putting curb and gutter and everything else. I mean, it's like, it's like going to your house, Dad, and saying, you have to put in curb and gutter alongside, just because, I mean.
Begging and pleading for somebody to like.
I know. My, my point, my point is, is that if they're not, if they're leaving it farmland, I think as is is what it is. But I, I also think maybe, I mean, maybe they could, maybe they could, could give the city the land for that half the road and let the city decide what to do with that when you put in your storm drain.
So, so we will exact the land. They are giving, they must give the land with their plating.
And they may never develop that part. That's all I'm saying. And, and so all I'm saying is they may never do anything with it. If that's the case, I mean, you put your storm drain in and at one point in time, maybe the city wants to finish it or maybe they don't. I mean, I don't know. I'm not saying the city has to. I'm just saying we'll have the land and.
Feel like though this is the opportunity to get the road finished. I mean, you got a new owner that's coming in and wanting to improve their property. Improve it to accommodate the rest of the neighborhood.
It's not a new owner. It's an original owner that's had the land in the family forever.
That's, that's a good point. So.
We actually deeded the other half of the road to, to, I believe it was Staley's that put that neighborhood in. We deeded that property to them so they could even have a road.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
We deeded that half of the road that's in there, fourteen-ten, to the developer previously. So that they could have that road then.
I might correct a little bit. So this is a family that's sold the land for Walmart and Home Depot. So you're a developing family. We, we can't hide from that because the legal owner of this land.
We didn't own the land Walmart's on.
The owner of this land is the same entity that's developing land across from Costco, right? And so, and so I'm not trying to say you're not farmers because you are and your family has defended farming with as much strength and vigor as any family I know.
My brother still farms that land. He's crying because I'm building a house on it.
Yeah, it's all family that's done well developing farmland in the area, right? And so before this application, the city hasn't had ownership of that second half of the land. And so one thing that we gained with an application is, is they would dedicate to the city with this plat, that, that roadway. Is that correct, Rick? Are you not showing that as dedicated?
Are you talking about the north half of fourteen-ten?
Uh huh.
No.
Oh, so we're not even showing that as.
An easement for the storm drain.
But not the roadway?
Correct.
Okay.
And I just want to point out also, there's sixteen feet of pavement on fourteen-ten. I think that is kind of the, the heart of what the issue is. The city requires when we go put a roadway in or something, it's like at least twenty-five, if not thirty feet, right?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, big, yeah.
Okay, twenty-seven minimum of asphalt if we do a half road or something like that. And Susan did not create this issue. It was the developer before that did the the subdivision there. So I don't know why she is responsible for fixing that problem now when it's not, she didn't even make the problem. You know what I mean? And she's not going to be using that road. It's those people that live there that use the road. She doesn't need to fix a problem somebody else created.
So when the easement was provided for that road, was enough property given to allow that twenty-five foot of road? Was that part of?
I wasn't around for that, those decisions, whatever.
The easement passed the pavement current. It's shown on his map.
They could have paid it. They, they had the right to extend it over into their property that much further. Okay.
It's something that you, you ask for just to help accomplish where you hope the city eventually gets, which is at least, at least dedicate the next, the next bit for the city to build a roadway someday when it's ready. That would align with what Public Works wants to do with drainage, but not require people to spend money building something today that's going to be torn up. Because it sounds like way it's presented to you tonight is if the city ever wants that road to be widened, before they develop the seven acres, the city's going to have to come buy an easement from, or a roadway from them as well.
Yeah, I mean, to me, I understand the desire to build a little family sanctuary back there and I love it. I'm really glad to hear that. I think everybody in the neighborhood will like that. For several reasons. I, I do think that building that and, and getting that access point and putting in, you know, that little mini cul-de-sac, you know, that road fourteen-ten, it's got to be fixed. We're gonna, the city's going to have to get that property one way or another.
I'll tell you what, she'll give you the property and you guys can do whatever you want with it. Is that fair? You guys can put a road base down to widen out the drivable surface if you want, or pave it, or whatever you want to do. She'll give you the property.
Has the city, I, I appreciate that. Has the city ever done something in this situation where they share the costs, like at some kind of a split? Is it either one or the others? City taxes people. Yeah.
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 Let the city deal with it. I, I like that, but I don't know if we, I don't know if we're the body that makes that decision.
But I mean, I don't know what I'm saying. I mean, if you, I mean, you dedicate the land over to the city, for the relevant, you can also say, you can also, an exception is, is how you pay or change your mind and turn that pasture land into a development or whatever.
Yeah.
And if the state pasture land forever, and everyone in the city says they want to live in the game or not.
Susan, you're okay to build that part of the road later, right? When you develop that portion of the subdivision.
You have to build it if you leave a pasture land.
You won't have to.
I just, I mean, if we don't, if we leave a pasture land, I don't want it.
Can you, can you, I'm, I'm sorry, they're just trying to record. Please speak into the mic.
Sorry, I guess I don't understand what you're saying.
Just deed that property over to the city.
Yeah.
Six feet?
I don't know, whatever, whatever, whatever they need to make the road.
Eleven feet.
The full fifty foot, right, to make it a full fifty.
Make it a full road.
So is that, is that showing where the turn is? Is that the, where it will go?
It's like a foot past the sidewalk.
Okay.
And so then, but if you, if you guys develop it, then you have to put it in.
Yeah, we understand. If we develop up into there.
And if not, you just give it to the city and if, that way they don't have, that way you guys don't have to buy it, buy it if they never get to it.
So do you think the city will end up putting it in if I deed the property now? Do you think they will end up putting it in soon?
No.
No.
Yeah, what the Public Works representative has said is that they, Public Works doesn't view that as a roadway that is a priority to build unless and until more density comes on the land adjacent to it.
Well, it.
But when they put the, when they put the storm drain in.
We're hoping down the road possibly that maybe one or two of our other kids will come and build by us. Who knows?
Then they will put that in.
They don't live there.
And at that point, that's when they would.
That's when we would go.
So and maybe the better thing, maybe instead of giving the land away, because then the city's stuck with land that they don't want to, to pave. Maybe the better way is to include the full right-of-way easement on here. So that way, it's already there. You don't ever have to worry about getting an easement or this or that. The easement is there. But, you know, at any point in time, if you guys decide to develop that land, then you come back and you, you pay for the road.
Yeah.
Have to argue about getting easements or this or that if, if it never gets developed.
But it sounds like the neighborhood wants it now. So what do you do?
They don't have any say. It, it's.
We try to force it. You're not going to do it. But either way, it's not going to happen right now.
Okay.
Can we negotiate about?
Can the neighborhood go in together and build it? Do they want to?
Special.
They don't own the property. They can't do it.
Special tax assessment.
They can pay you to build it.
Oh, I see. I just want to go home.
So this is Commissioner Majors, I mean, I'm still a little bit hung up on, this is forty thousand dollars. This is.
Well, we don't know what it is. I don't know what, that's just, that's just, that's just what he's saying. I don't know.
It's, that's a ballpark and then, and then a fence, you know, a new fence on the side of it, it adds up.
Without, without having an actual bid, I mean, Cory, you're good, but I mean, you, my point though, whether it's forty thousand dollars or forty dollars, it's not, if they're not going to develop it.
Yeah.
It's, it's not our responsibility to put that burden on them, even if the neighbors across the street want it. It's just not correct. It's not right. But at the same time, if this, but they're not developing that portion. That's not.
They are developing that portion because it was all one portion to begin with.
Yeah, but they're putting two lots over here. I mean, we're not talking twenty lots. We're talking two. If we're talking twenty lots, I'd be like, okay, I get it. You have a significant number of people coming out there. But with two people, it's not going to change the, the traffic on that street as it currently is in its existing state.
Because it's being changed and it is being developed, this is a chance to make it right.
Talk into your mic.
Sorry. I do feel like though, that they're, with the making the change, this is an opportunity to make it right.
Make it right.
Yeah.
To win.
Partially, yeah, partially developing that.
What wrong are we, what wrong are we trying to make right?
I just, it's uncommon.
Right before.
Well, she hasn't, no, she hasn't done it, but she is wanting to make an improvement, right, on her property. So why not make the full improvement? Why only do a partial improvement?
I kind of see what you're saying because they're not improving, I mean, they're not improving that side. They're improving the access into where those two lots are. But that is a third lot. So it is, you know, I understand, I understand that too. It's a third lot.
Say that again.
You can sell that, you can sell that third lot to someone else because now there's three, there's three different partial ID numbers on that now. Not one, three. So therefore it is three lots. They could sell that lot tomorrow if they felt like.
True, that would be, if they sold.
You undeveloped that. And then, then it might not ever get developed again or however they come into.
And if somebody came in for a building permit on that third lot, the city would say, no, you have to put the street drainage in. You still have a chance to say what needs to happen at that time.
So let me, let me throw this out there too.
Okay, then we're putting all the, all the burden on that lot too.
Well, that's what we're doing now.
Yep, they own the property. They can sell it and recoup that money when they sell it. The challenge with tonight is the history that some, at some point in the past, only a partial road. And a full one probably should have been, I think is what Rick is saying.
At least a half of it.
At least the full half, yeah.
It was, yeah, at some point in the past, the mistake of not requiring the full thing is haunting us tonight. And it's a difficult element for this applicant. I think you're wrestling with it as good as you can wrestle with it. I don't know that there is a perfect answer. One idea that has come to me is, you know, let's at least get the city ownership of the roadway there, the land, so that when and if that becomes such a necessity, that the city can then go fund it, or the city can keep waiting for the next, next application that would build it out, right? And that's at least more progress than, than we've met so far, right? Farther down the road than we've ever been before. That also addresses this question of, you know, should we make them build something that we're just going to tear out at some point? Now, the challenge is that project that we're talking about for Storm Drain, it's not in this year's budget. It's not going to be next year's budget probably either, right? Like, it's somewhere in the future, but it's not immediately in the future either. And so we're bal, trying to balance all of those balls and come up with a rational, reasonable solution. And, and so I don't know that it's going to be perfect, but, but there might be something that, that can work still.
Well, so here's my next question. If we, if they deed it over to the city now, do they have to put it in later? Do they have to put it in where they don't own the property?
My suggestion would be because Public Works is saying, please don't put that in yet because it'll make it more expensive for our future project. Because that's what I hear them saying is, it's going to cost them more to dig up roadway and sidewalk and install a storm drain than if it was just raw land. That's what I hear. That we might, traditionally, we would say, you don't dedicate us a road until there's a, a road improvement finished on it with the right width of asphalt and the right shape and size of curbing. Until all of that meets city standard, they don't accept it as public. So we would be essentially creating an exception where we say, look, at least just give us the full width for city, for, for public, for a public road. And then we would acknowledge that in light of these circumstances, the roadway won't be required to be built at this time. No, that's, that's just the, the kind of middle ground suggestion. This group can say, build it all, build it all with this one too, if, if that's how you, how the, how you want to do it. I don't think we need to build it all. If it's going to cost the city more to rip it out to put that storm drain in, unless they decide to develop it before the storm drain goes in. That's, that's my thing. I'm, and I'm fine with that.
I don't think it needs to be built now.
I mean, it'd be nice if you could run a grader and throw something on it so they could get around. But I understand you can't.
Thad, what do you, there was an, an option brought up about granting an access easement right now for the rest of that fifty-foot right-of-way. Is that a, an alternative? The, there's been some concern also, if, if we grant the right-of-way itself, then there might be some complication with making the developer pay for the improvements later if the city already owns the land. But if we grant an easement right now.
If it's just an easement, they can still sell the property. Someone still has to put the improvements in.
At any time, the city can come in and say, like, if we want to add some more road base out there to make a, a bypass for fire trucks or whatever, you know, to go around, park cars or whatnot, you know, that would be an.
That solution also helps the city not have to split their policy in half about public road dedication. That's right. And so that would, that would allow the solution for, for a wider width of, of ingress and egress without Public Works having to, you know, cut their baby in half on the, on the road, road acceptance policy. That's, yeah, I like that idea. We'll do it that way. And so I think what the proposal would mean is you, there's an amended plat or at least a condition that says the, the final preliminary plat that gets approved by staff would show additional ru, uh, public, public roadway easement that would then, you know, allow, allow those type of installations to help improve that, the width of that passageway.
And that, that goes to the back sidewalk.
It's us.
No, I mean, so it gives road, curb gutter, sidewalk.
So it gives the city the rights, but then they don't contribute at all to the cost.
Yes. The city can, they can upgrade if they want with gravel or whatever, or just have access or, or nothing. But it just makes sure they, the city always has the easement. It's all the time. This is way better because then, like, if they sell the property, they can still sell that property, including the easement.
Yeah.
Developments develops it, or if they develop it, that person has to put the road in at that point.
The next development will take care of it.
Way to do it.
My, my ideal solution would be that combined with whenever that gets developed, they pay it for a percentage of the, of the development as well.
Well, the people, the people that develop it will put, will pay for, they'll pay for all of it.
They'll pay for all of it.
Comes in and later develops.
Leaving an easement, that means that whoever develops it pays for all of it.
I see.
If the city, if they were to give it to the city, then it's on the city's dime a hundred percent.
Okay.
Commissioner Anderson, I'll make a motion to approve, why do we never have numbers on these? Anyway, to, to approve the preliminary plat for Hartwood, Hartwood Farm Subdivision located approximately fourteen ten south Heritage Fields Drive with the findings and conditions outlined staff, plus an extra condition number fifteen, that at the recording of the final plat, a full width, public right-of-way easement will be.
Granted.
Dedicated, the right word? No, it's not dedicated.
I, I would have the.
Be shown on the, on the final plat.
Yeah, the final plat will show the, the conveyance of a, of a right-of-way.
Conveyance, that's the right word I was looking for. Thank you.
Commissioner Tuppo, I second that.
I'm first by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Tuppo. Individual voting, Commissioner Anderson, Commissioner Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Tuppo.
Aye.
Commissioner Yore.
Aye.
I'm Commissioner Pollock. I'm an aye as well. Thanks. Item adjournment, item five. Right?
This is Commissioner Mitchell. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I'm the first and the second for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, guys. Good night.